We have a call, Madam Secretary?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good and well there. Marcia, Marcia, you're up.
Yeah.
Please, come and take the mic.
Oh, I don't need a mic.
You don't need a mic, okay, go ahead.
You, Marcia, I cannot hear people, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Marcia.
I just would like to know, who owns the vending machines? Since they've been taken out of the common area, we don't have access to them.
What vending machines?
The soda machines, the ice cream machines.
There's none on the property. There are no vending machines on the property.
Why were they taken out and put into the tea shop?
They were never, it was never done that way, Marcia. There was the vending machines, there were vending machines here, and the problem was is that they did not, apparently the story is that they were not cost effective for the distributor to put the vending machines in. We did not collect. In fact, maybe Terry can answer a little bit more of that, because it was under his watch.
Hello? It was a decision that was made to remove the machines because three months in a row they would come, they would give us our share of the money of the vending machines, and one month it was three dollars. I said, "I put three dollars in myself, how could we have three dollars out of there?" And I said, "They've gotta go." So, there was no accountability when they came, and we're running an electric 24/7 to keep to things, and you're telling me we get, there was three dollars? I said, "I bought three sodas myself." That's why they were taken out. Nobody to watch it.
Are they gonna give us two dollars?
But Marcia, I'm with you, by the way, when it comes to vending machines, especially on Sundays, when we do not have access to cold drinks, and maybe what we can do is sit down and try to figure out something that we can do for Sundays, because the rest of the week, the tea shop is open, they do have pop, and they sell them at a very reasonable one dollar. So, it's Sundays that we're really concerned about.
One of the vending machines, I think, that was profitable, or at least it paid for itself. We had a vending machine out near the pool, near the entrance to the, in the back entrance into the clubhouse, and I think that was pretty well used. So, we might find out if a vendor will give us a machine there.
Okay. I think, I think that at some point in time we'll have to readdress that, but it's really for one day a week, because the tea shop does provide a service Monday to Saturday. All right. Thank you, Marcia. Okay. Oh, the next item on the agenda is the President's message. Oh, I'm sorry. The waive the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I have the minutes of the regular meeting of February 20th, and the minutes of the budget meeting of February 27th, and the directors have been previously furnished with copies of them, and unless they find any errors or omissions to be corrected, I would appreciate a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and have them approved as presented.
Terry? No, 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 I have a correction, at least on the 20th, February 20th meeting.
Thank you, which one is it, please?
The treasurer's report. Okay, you say Mark Richardson reported, "We received an interest-free extension from Wells Fargo." That was the impression, but that's not the fact.
This is what he reported, sir, is there an error in what he reported?
Yes.
I mean, is there an error in what I took down?
Well, according to the conversation I had with him last night, he didn't intend that to be, whether, I mean, I got that impression, and I'm glad that you wrote that down, but his, his report indicated that $190,000 was moved back to December, but there is interest on that money.
Of course.
That is not interest-free. It's just that we didn't have to pay it when it was due.
Well, I don't think this says anywhere here that it was interest-free.
It does, it says, "An interest-free extension." You can say a time extension.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
It was the impression, I had that impression too, that's why I questioned him yesterday, just to be sure, but he told me that if I understood that, I was mistaken.
Oh, I have, I have, okay.
So, it's a time extension, we didn't have to pay it in September, or whenever it was due, they gave us until December to pay it. It was not interest-free, it's sitting there and earning interest every day.
Okay, okay, we got it. Can we have the motion amended, please, Terry, to, that the minutes of the February 20th meeting would be approved as corrected? Are there any objections? Thank you. Unanimous.
Good motion. Any objections? It was passed. I'm just going to, just to say a few words, just to bring you up a little to date. We have begun, finally, to send out violation letters. The violation letters range from anywhere from a torn screen to an individual that has a, an unregistered tenant or guest in the unit. That's the, that's the range. It's been about, what, about a week that we started this? So, that's the first notice, then of course the second notice has to go. So, the process has started. It's been a long time since violation letters have been sent out, and now we're starting to. The captain system of the buildings is, I think, working out okay. We still have some bugs. Sometimes the captains feel that we're not moving fast enough, but with the limited resources that we have, we're doing the best we can, although I still need some captains for the Marseille, for the Orleans, and for the Grenoble. So, if you live in those buildings, please come and see me after the meeting, and I will welcome you with open hearts. We began a barcode inspection a couple of weeks ago that resulted basically in most of the people that didn't have barcodes to come into the office and register their vehicles and get barcodes, and in that process, we were able to recognize a handful of illegal individuals that we are being, that we are dealing with at the present time. You'll notice, if you walk around, there will be some vehicles still with barcode, no barcodes on them. Those are individuals that are in foreclosure, and basically legally wise, we can't really do anything about it. Also, you'll be seeing, and you have begun to see, a new, a restart of our preventive maintenance program. We're starting to recognize small little areas where we need to go in and refresh, or rebuild, or redo. Again, it's a slow process because of limited resources, but we're taking it at one little project at a time. And basically, that's all I have to say. Any questions? I will provide that for you, yes. I'd like to call on now our property manager to make our management report.
I have a copy of Marc's report.
Do you? Madam Secretary, would you like to read it on behalf of our treasurer? Thank you.
Mr. Richman was kind enough to print out his report dated March 16th, 2012. February's operating account is reconciled and show the balance of $94,699 in the red. The opening balance was $2,681.98. Checks written were $37,000, oh, this can't be right. And deposits received were $2,000, so forgive me, yes, $276,677.34. I did not reconcile these figures, so I'm not sure just what I read. Reconciliation of the monthly special assessment account has been finalized. $85,033.94 has been set aside in the Wells Fargo Special Assessment Account. That amount will be drawn by the bank early next week. With that payment, all amounts due the bank for 2012 to date will be paid, except for the February Special Assessment overage. Overage defined is the difference between what the unit owners pay IV per month on their SA accounts, and what the bank draws per month to satisfy the loan. Hereon, the overage will be sent to the bank three to five weeks after the end of the preceding month. IV currently has titled to three units in bank foreclosure, and is receiving $1,950 a month rent. A fourth unit is soon to be added, and will generate another $700 to $750 rental per month. These rents are also being used to pay down the loan obligation. The board is acutely aware of the discrepancy between funds received and disbursements made. Every effort is being made to prioritize expenses, control costs, collect delinquencies, and enhance maintenance collections. Please grant us some patience as we try to work our way through these formidable tasks. Respectfully submitted, Mark W. Richmond, Treasurer.
Copy of this report will be made available for everyone in the office as of tomorrow AM. Thank you. Yes? You know what? I don't know. We haven't been able to reach him, and I saw him an hour before the meeting. Okay, anyway, and I did say it was seven o'clock tonight, so it's good. We'll move on to our management report. Ms. Popejoy?
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna be doing George with mine tonight, because he's running late, and he does apologize. George and I have been sitting down talking about preventative maintenance. There was an issue that was brought to the board, maybe a year and a half ago, regarding pest control. We seem to be getting overrun again with the pests, and the current system is not working to the best of its ability. George and I are out getting new bids. We would like to have every unit sprayed in the village, because right now what's happening is we're having maybe 10, 20 units sprayed every week, every couple of weeks, and although we're being diligent in getting all the common area sprayed, meaning the trash chutes, the trash rooms, the meter rooms, the laundry rooms, it, we're still getting an influx of people calling. The biggest one right now is the Bordeaux is being infested. Prior to that, the Edelweiss had issues, as well as the Zurich, and, okay, and the Heidelberg. So, right now, we're acquiring quotes again, and we would, we really, that's something that needs to be done. Every unit needs to be sprayed, because you don't know what condition your neighbors' units are in. Also, we are looking to get, again, about a year and a half ago, we brought to the board's attention the interlock-in and termites. We got a quote to inspect every unit in the interlock-in for termites, because we were having an influx of termite calls as well. So, we're getting that requoted for this year as well, and we'll be bringing that to the board, because it, sometimes it's as simple as someone buying brand-new cabinets that have been sitting in a warehouse at Home Depot or Lowe's, and the cabinets come in, it has a couple little termites, and the next thing you know, people are calling us from all the units around that as well. So, we're still having calls on termites as well, so that's something that needs to be taken care of, because it's, it's as simple as the cabinets, or as bringing in a table or something like that that you purchased. We are still having numerous leaks in the buildings that George has to react to, which is why I'm grateful we're doing the leak detection, because that way we'll be proactive instead of reactive towards it. It'll also help cut down on our water costs, which would be fantastic. So, I'm gonna ask you, when it's ready and the signs get put up, if people will please call the office, make the appointment, so we can come in and check out your bathtubs and everything, so we can look for leaks, because just this, last week, we had about six different calls that we had to go on. And granted, not all the time there are association problems, there are unit owner problems, but at least help us determine and be proactive in that as well, to see what's going on, because a lot of times people don't realize that they have a leak behind their showers down, and things like that. The barcode system that Charlie had brought up, not only are we detecting people that shouldn't be here, we have gotten three rent garnishments out of it, so it's a fantastic program for the village. We find people who come in who want barcodes, realize that their owner is delinquent, and then we just have them fill out the paperwork and sign, so we can get rent garnishments and get more money in for the village. The timeline, finally, for the interlock-in to be completed, Georgia said would be about We had to take some of the men off of it because of limited staff to deal with preventative maintenance issues, or just regular maintenance issues. So, that will be done by mid-April. We also have someone that is checking out the roofs on a monthly basis now, that the rain's coming, to make sure that the gutters are clear, make sure that there are no bubbles on the roof. So, are there any questions? Yes, Judy?
When you do the pet spray, the spraying thing, will you, it's gonna be the kind that doesn't harm cats?
As far as I'm aware, it's the normal stuff, and I believe we've been through this before, for normal monthly spraying, it's not harmful to animals.
I know, but you're getting a new company, so I just wanted to be sure.
Well, we're allowed to have cats here, so there are some people that have cats. Yes, yes, they do. I'm sorry? That, I believe, is on the agenda tonight? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, the gentleman over there asked who had animals, that's why I said cats, and then the young lady right there wanted to know about the dogs, and we'll be discussing that tonight. Yes, Phyllis?
If the humans are going to be sprayed, how often is it going to be sprayed? Is that gonna be once a month, or?
Oh, no, no. I would like to have it done every six months, but we'll see about the cost effectiveness. There is one, a company that I contacted, that swears we only have to have them sprayed once a year, and then they'll come out if there are any indication that the bugs aren't dead. So, one moment, Joe?
Hey, where are we at with the seawall issues? Drink pipe failures have been going on for the last year. No resolution.
There's no resolution right now, because I'm still waiting on pictures.
I have to look, I haven't had a chance to look.
Hold on, Steve, Paul had his hand up first.
This preventative maintenance thing, does that involve snaking the pipes to keep them clear of?
Yes, we bought a snake last year, and they have been snaking out drain lines. Steve?
With hurricane season approaching, we need to do an accurate inventory to make sure we have enough generators, chainsaws, and gasoline to operate generators and chainsaws.
Okay, thank you. Judy?
Are they gonna do something further to try to get rid of that raccoon in there, in the clubhouse?
He came through the chicken wire that we had put up there, so now we're looking at another idea, which is maybe the expandable foam. But Alberta went up there today, I had him check the chicken wire, and he came through.
Was there anything dead up there, because there's a smell of rotten fish coming from there?
No, but I'll see if they remove the hot dogs.
Okay, thank you.
It could be the hot dogs that we were trying to entice the raccoon with.
I was up there, I was up there maybe before yesterday, and most of the food that was left to entice the raccoon has been removed.
Oh, okay, good, thank you.
By the raccoon?
And by the, yeah.
He's pretty smart.
And tall, up there, none, so that's a good sign.
Yes. So, we're still looking at ways of keeping the raccoon out of the clubhouse.
Thank you.
Because we have traps set up on the outside, we have the traps set up on the inside, and he just doesn't want to be trapped.
He's very smart.
Yes, Joe?
The chicken wire, chicken wire doesn't work there. No, gotta use quarter-inch mesh.
Okay, I'll let George know.
They're too strong.
Okay.
Thank you, Maureen.
You're welcome.
We're gonna move on to our committee reports. We'll start, sorry. Oh, security, where was I? Sorry, guys, my glasses, and my eyes are a little squared up. Do we have our security chief here today?
Absolutely.
Good evening, everyone. The report for this month, last month, we had about seven to nine tow trucks that had been trying to sneak into the property to look for certain victims. Now, I was told by La La Hill Police Department, and also, and also other people here in the property, that if they don't have any court documents from the court state, then they gotta come and repo a car. I cannot let them in. Now, when the guards working at night, they have to call me, I have to rush down here late at night to make sure that the tow truck don't come in, because what they've been trying to do is, they've been parking the truck on the outside, jumping the wall, or if they don't jump the wall, they park the truck right in the front, and they're trying to sneak in. Soon as somebody leaving on the property, they're trying to sneak in through the exit side of the, of the gate, to try to come into the property to come and repo people's car. So, lately, we've been stopping a lot of repos that have been coming into the property. That's number one. Number two, the back wall. Last month I reported, I said it was 13. This month alone, it's been eight. People jumping that back wall behind the Grenoble and the Marseille building. There's been eight people so far, okay? Also, vehicles that are, that have no tags, no barcodes, like Charlie had implemented in the beginning of the meeting, we started barcode violation. Most of the people that have come in through the gate have gone to the office to go get their barcodes on their vehicle, but I think it was like maybe five of them, if I'm not mistaken with Maureen, have come in, and basically did all the paperwork that necessary for them to be legal here with the association, okay? So, that's been working pretty well. We're gonna start in another three more months, we're gonna start that up again, when we have no renters or no owners coming to the property, just to keep it up, the system going. Also, dogs. I've been getting phone calls every single day about dogs here on the property. Now, we do have dogs, certain dogs that are registered with the association, however, we have a lot of dogs that are not registered, okay? I'm doing it, I know Sarah's been helping me out, I, this, Joe's been calling me on a weekly basis about dogs, so we're doing our very best to catch all these dogs here, okay? We are doing our very best, okay? Last but not least, the ducks. The ducks over here behind the Heidelberg Building and the Edelweiss Building, there's two residents that have been feeding the ducks, and I've been telling them not to, not to feed the ducks, please. The Marseille? Okay, not to be feeding the ducks. Yorkshire, okay? So, we got, we got people feeding ducks. If you's catch them, please call me and let me know, so I'll send out a violation letter to them. They should not be feeding the ducks whatsoever.
There's even, there's a Lauderdale ordinance against it. I mean, it's actually illegal in the city to do that. It's not somebody just wanting to take your fun away from you by telling you not to feed the ducks. And they, we have somebody at the Yorkshire who actually feeds the ducks on the lawn, and not too long ago, we had not had the problem, there was a rat at the entrance to the Yorkshire. Feeding the ducks is a very, very bad idea.
Okay? Also, we have, we are gonna be starting a new program, that I'm gonna have one of my staff to be going, with one of the maintenance guys, to be going to each unit, to be checking out for, for who? Yeah, leak detections. We're gonna be checking it out. We're gonna be starting that pretty, pretty, pretty soon. So, I want you guys to cooperate, because it's very important, and we must get this system done, okay? We're not here to check to see if there's any legal, we're not here for that. We're just gonna make sure that our program is up and running the way it's supposed to be running here for the business, for your safety, that's all it is for, okay? Last but not least, the back doors. It's very important, because lately, I've been here one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, and I'm working six days out of the week. There's a, the back doors of each building are left wide open. Carpets on the floor, people leave rocks, people out. The other day, I saw somebody left a table, a table, behind the Marseille building. It, it, it doesn't make any sense. And now that we lock in the doors at the Heidelberg Building, and also the Edelweiss Building, people are leaving trash in front of the laundry rooms. It doesn't make any sense. This is your community, you know? I'm quite sure you guys love it, I love working here, but please, if you guys catch anybody leaving trash in front of the laundry room, when the laundry rooms are locked up in front in each building, please let me know, okay? Because I'm quite sure they put up the signs on every building saying the laundry room's gonna be locked up at 10 o'clock at night, and be open at 8 o'clock in the morning, but now we've got people leaving trash in front of the laundry room. That's not fair. It's very disgusting, okay? It's not fair to my staff, it's not fair to me, it's not fair to George. It is very inappropriate, okay? Thank you.
How are you doing the water detection? Are you doing it sonically, A, B, C, D, or you're only doing it for people that are home?
Thank you, Alwood. And now, committee report. Any questions? Questions, please? Joe, question for Alwood?
I don't understand the concept of a tow truck sneaking into the, I don't get that. That's ridiculous. Security staff, it shouldn't be any tow trucks coming in here.
Basically, this is what happened.
Unless they're called.
I've seen parked out there in front.
Yeah.
Why can't we call the police and have them recruit? You're not supposed to be parking in this way, is that what happened?
Right. This was basically what happened. If they come to repo somebody's car, let's say my car for example, I don't pay my car, and I work here, they know that I work here. Basically, what they do is, if they know they're gonna get stopped at the gate, because they don't have court orders from the state saying that they come to repo, what basically what they do is they wait so for somebody to leave the property. The arm doesn't come down right away, they give them a five, five or 10 seconds delay, then they come down. What they try to do is soon as that person leave, they come right on in through the exit side to come into the property to come and repo.
With your tow truck?
Yes. The, the security is there?
See that tow truck coming?
Yes, he does, and we call it over, and then when, when we get over there, they're trying to give us a hard time about doing our job.
Why don't they send the police?
Okay? No, we call, when, when we call the police, the police tell, tell, tell us it's not of our hand, it's just a repo matter. That's what basically was going on. Right. Well, basically, if they don't have it, they, they have, they have the document from their, from their company, but it don't have it from the court state, then it has to be repo, is basically what they're trying to do.
Company can hire a repo guy, don't you watch Repo Man on TV? They got a reality show.
Any other questions? Joe, we still have another question, go ahead.
Charles was copied in on an email, "The latest incident at the Heidelberg has been very good, nobody's even attracted." Only when the doors are open, and it wasn't open until almost nine o'clock.
You're still not doing a good job there, Joe, you're absolutely right. That's why we have posted hours, and they're just not doing their job properly. You're absolutely right. Any other questions regarding security? All right, then we'll move on to our committee reports. I'll hand the microphone over to Francis for our I'll hand the microphone over to Francis for our sales and leasing committee report. Thank you.
The committee met twice before this meeting. The first meeting was on February the 27th. We approved a rollover lease for Marseille 2S, one-bedroom unit for $750 a month. Approved an annual lease for Yorkshire 1S, a one-bedroom unit, $650 a month. The unit is owned by International Village. Approved a sale of Marseille 1A, a two-bedroom unit for $46,000. Assessment payoff of $6,161,21 was received. The property closed on or about March 6th. Approved a rollover lease for Marseille 3S, one-bedroom, $700 a month. Approved annual lease for Edelweiss 2N, one-bedroom unit for $825 a month. Approved an annual lease for Heidelberg 1E, a one-bedroom unit for $850 a month. Disapproved a permanent occupancy permit for Grenoble 2W. Proposed occupant owed a dog that was not a registered service animal. Approved an annual lease, annual lease for Nottingham 1H, two-bedroom unit for $1,000 a month. Approved a rollover lease for Yorkshire 1B, a one-bedroom unit for $650 a month. Approved a rollover lease for Orleans 3H, a two-bedroom unit for $1,100 a month. Approved a rollover lease for Marseille 3L, a two-bedroom unit for $950 a month. And approved an annual lease for Zurich 2Z, a two-bedroom unit for $1,200 a month. On Wednesday, March 7th, the meeting, committee met again. And approved an annual lease for Zurich 2F, a one-bedroom unit for $800 a month. Approved an annual lease for Zurich 1A, a one-bedroom unit for $800 a month. Approved a rollover lease for Yorkshire 3J, a two-bedroom unit for $900 a month. Approved a rollover lease for Nottingham 3L, a two-bedroom unit for $995 a month. Approved a rollover lease for Nottingham 2R, an efficiency unit for $700 a month. And approved an annual lease for Grenoble 1W, a two-bedroom unit for $1,000 a month. In all cases where annual leases were approved, the units were exempt from the 25% cap or the unit as in one case was owned by International Village. The committee would appreciate a motion accepting the report and approving the actions of the committee.
Marvin, move. Do I have a second there?
I'll second.
Select second. Any objections? Any discussion? Motion carried. Thank you, Francis. We will move on now to the 25% amendment committee report. Marvin?
On March 9th, the 25% cap amendment committee met. The committee members are Eve Gammy, Frances Misero, Harriet Handler, and myself. We met to discuss the options available to the association about compliance with or alternatives to the amendment. And at that meeting, Mr. Ed Kaufman announced that he was challenging the validity of the amendments that were recorded on in February 2008 based on his findings that were, that there was not a sufficient quorum to approve the amendments. One question that immediately came up was one of statute of limitations. We got word today from our attorney that there is a five-year statute of limitations. So Mr. Kaufman as well, it's, it's four years after the fact, so he's within the, the statute. The committee will now work to confirm Mr. Kaufman's claim. And basically, either way, the committee's going to continue discussions about what alternatives are available to the association about, about amendments relating to rentals in, in the community. This is an ongoing discussion, a very important one. So that's going to be a continuing situation. Any questions about that? Any from units? Now, a discussion on the rental status of O1J and G2P.
We've had appeal from two owners that wanted to rent. They have been denied based on the 25% cap in our documents. And I'm gonna hand over the microphone to Francis to make an explanation and then ask the gentlemen themselves to come up, step up and personally make their, their appeal. Thank you.
With regard to O1J, the unit was purchased from an estate, the Phoebish Estate. And in the contract of sale, the representatives for the estate asked if they could transfer to the new owners their right to rent the unit immediately instead of waiting one year. After some, after some conversations and pulling the, the board, Mr. Terry Tresigny sent an email saying... Sent an email that the board felt that the contract for sale should be honored the way it was written. Subsequently, the part, the property evidently was transferred, although there's no formal approval in the sales and leasing committee records. But the property was transferred. And ultimately, the new owners filed an, an, an application for rental. Unfortunately, by the time they filed their application for rental, the 25% cap had been put into effect. We had realized that we had not, we had reached the cap, in fact, we're a little bit over. So on March 2nd, the, the committee wrote to the broker for the owner, who is Mr. Marcos Segalas, saying that we regretted that at the time we received the application for rent, the 25% rental cap was in effect and we could not entertain the application. The appeal of the parties, unless I am misunderstood, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, is that they are entitled to rent without waiting for one year. Not only were they assured when they bought the property that that was so, but in subsequent correspondence, they were assured that they had bought the property during the time when a moratorium on some of the amendments was in effect and that they were entitled to rent without waiting the one year. And we don't not, we do not disagree with that. Unfortunately, the denial is not based on the one-year waiting period. The denial is based on the fact that we have reached a 25% cap and we can't, we can't entertain their lease request. Shall I continue with the other or...? So that's O1J.
Yes, uh... Grab the mic, would you, Jerry, please, begin.
I'm trying to understand the concept of, at the settlement, the ability to rent was passed on to the buyer and it was approved by the president at the time. Was that, is that, is that my understanding, am I correct in what I'm saying? Was that a singular approval by the president? Or was that a board approval by the board?
Mr. Tresigny. Mr. Tresigny writes, "It appears that we have more than five board members who want to honor the contract, therefore it will be honored." This never came before the board at a meeting and the five board members who wanted to have the contract honored are not named.
That's, that's, that doesn't seem very enforceable. But I'm not even interested in that because I'm, I'm for the rentals. But I'm, what bothers me is the way it was handled. Was it ever done before in that manner? That, that a right to rent was transferred at settlement to the new buyer from the, from the seller? Has that ever occurred? I mean, I'm not familiar with that way of transferring.
I like, I like to tell you, that it's not a usual thing, Jerry, and it, it was not, it was not something that everybody felt should be done.
Has it ever happened?
It was brought, okay.
Has it ever happened?
I brought to the attention of the board, and it says right here in one of the emails, "It was brought to my attention," this is Charles Fitzpatrick email, "by Francis, that if the Phoebish family wanted to rent the unit, according to our documents, there would be no problem. However, it is not the estate that is asking for right of rental. They are asking on behalf of a buyer. Therefore, the new buyer does not inherit the grandfathered-in exception." This was the opinion of several board members. And if, ultimately, as I said, the property did go, did evidently go to settlement, but it never was approved by the sales and lease committee.
It wasn't approved by the board?
It was not approved by the board either.
It wasn't approved by the sales and lease committee?
And the...
All right, I just wanted to know if it ever happened before, if there was a precedent for it? If there was, you, you have them...
Not to my knowledge.
And you've been here a long time, Francis?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just inquiring.
I just wanna make something very clear. This is not a question of not allowing them to rent. This is a question of not allowing them to rent now. If, we are at the capacity according to our documents. So this board, well, I'm sorry, I cannot talk for the board, I can talk for myself. According to our documents, we cannot go above that, no exceptions. Any other comments? Then I'm gonna ask the gentleman, whoever to come up, will give you... Yes, hold on, hold on, hold on, Marvin?
Do we, since, is there anybody here representing O1J?
You know what, I'm so sorry, sir. Can you just sit down because this is the wrong unit?
Is there anybody here representing O1J? Okay, so do we need to vote to deny the appeal? So I make a motion that we deny the appeal to rent O1J?
Any objections? Motion carried. We will now discuss the appeal for G2P. We'll have our Francis to give us some information. Then the board will discuss it and then we'll ask the gentlemen to come up to make a verbal presentation. Thank you.
With G2P, we have two, two issues. One is that the application to purchase the property was made by Mr. Moshe Shabat. When the property went to closing, instead of his taken title, the title was taken in the name of a LLC. Mr. Shabat had assured us through the property manager that he would have that taken care of and have the name and have the property placed in his sole name. Instead of that, it was Sunny Properties, a South Florida LLC, which he had done at settlement. Subsequently, this was, this property was purchased in the summer of 2011. In September of 2011, they received a letter from the property manager telling them that since they had bought during the moratorium, they would be allowed to rent right away. No further action was, we heard no further from them until a application was filed on February 15th, 2012 in the name of Mr. Shabat asking to rent the property. This is Grenoble 2P. And the committee, myself as association secretary, wrote to Mr. Shabat with a copy to Sunny Properties telling them that we were very sorry that at the time we received their application, the 25% rental cap mandated by our condo documents had gotten into effect and that the unit is not accepted from this rental cap. We again reminded him that he had to have the property taken out of an LLC and placed in his sole name. This too has not still been done as of this date. Again, the rejection was not a challenge to them that they could rent and not wait one year. The committee did not challenge that. They still have the right to rent as soon as possible. We simply cannot accept their application to rent because of the 25% rental cap. And in the matter of this, we took the liberty of getting the opinion of our attorney. I'm now going to read the whole, the whole thing. "The subject unit owner should not be prohibited from ever renting their unit." This is the final conviction, and this is true. They just can't rent their unit right now.
Question.
As I understand it, the unit is still owned by a corporation?
Yeah, by a limited, limited liability corporate company.
Which, which is, which is not an individual, it's a company. That is against our documents.
It's not a corporation, it's a limited liability company.
Okay, my understanding is that, i- i- is, is ownership by an LLC, is that allowed under our docs?
It is not.
It is not.
It is not. What is the association, what is available to us to remedy that situation? We have to allow that, that illegal ownership to continue?
No, no, remedy is for that to change the name to an individual, that's the reason.
If it had to change that, it wouldn't, the, the corporation, forgive, we're not a corporation, the LLC was never permitted to buy this property. You know, we, we didn't, if, if, if we had entertained an application by the LLC, we wouldn't have gone through our usual clearing process for all of the members of the LLC, which was not done. We only, we entertained Mr. Moshe Shabat's application and cleared Mr. Shabat so far as, as background check and financials. The LLC was never cleared to, to, to purchase the property.
Well, this, so, so...
They'll clear that.
So basically, that, they're in violation. They're, they're in violation of our docs. So in order to enforce this, one remedy we have is to issue a violation letter and continue that process and fine them. Okay, and obviously, they'd be better off going to an individual ownership rather than paying to find out. Okay, thank you.
I, I'm questioning the lawyer's conclusion. Okay, the lawyer concluded that they can rent, but not now, right? And the question I have is, when can they rent? Why not now? Is that because of the 25%?
Because of the 25% cap, yes.
We've reached our 25% cap.
All right.
Yes, Joe?
He, he didn't address the corporation issue or the LLC issue. Is that what you're saying, Francis? In your, his letter, he did not address the LLC issue.
No, sir, we did not bring that up. We have been asking Mr. Shabat to correct this. We've been giving him plenty of time, plenty of leeway. He keeps promising that he will, but he does not perform. No, we did not press that issue.
We, we have not used that issue and say, because that is an issue, that you cannot appeal. We have not used that. No, we have not. Although it's our right to, we have not. Yes, Joe, you have a question?
Just a comment, Jerry's point, to continue. I hope the attorney's not saying it's okay to rent at a certain point, even if you're still illegal as an LLC.
No, no, that's not what we're saying. What the attorney said was a general comment.
That's how you resolve.
Right. The general comment was that you can rent, if you have the legal right to rent, you can. Except you can't rent now because we've reached a 25% limit. except you can't rent now because we've reached a 25% limit.
When is that going to be--
At that point, it becomes available to rent. Those units are still an LLC. It's still illegal.
Right.
Right, but for fairness sake, we did not deny their right to appeal based on that. We only based it on the 25% cap, Joe.
Okay, question on the process here with these units. Understand that they never went to the board and never got approval from sales. Did either one of these units ever come before sale or leasing?
Oh, sure. I mean, she just made a report on it. Yeah, it was denied by sales and leasing.
Denied, okay.
Yeah, it was denied. Mr. Shabat, would you like to come up and make your personal appeal?
Lord, I think we're kind of missing very important parts. You know, like-- I said we missed a big part of why we purchased this unit. I mean, we purchased this unit based on the fact that we understood that we can rent the apartment. We get a letter from Maureen that actually states that we can rent the apartment. If we would not get the letter, we would never bought the apartment. There was an argument between us and the bank. Who's going to get-- There was a special assessment of $28,000. At that time, we didn't want to buy because they want us to pay a special assessment. So we had to negotiate, get more money for the community and pay more from our pocket in order to buy this apartment. So I think right now, the moratorium thing, the cap was never mentioned. The only thing that was mentioned in the letter is that we can rent the apartment as soon as we can. And I have the letter right here. If everybody wants to see it, you can review it. From Maureen, with a letter of international village. So I mean, we feel like that we've been treated unfairly here with all this 25% cap. And actually, we have an attorney here that came to speak, and the president asked him to get out of the room, which was kind of rude to me. Instead of explaining here his position, after investigating, you know, you read the condo's and yes, you know, you can explain the position much better.
I understand your frustration. And personally, I feel for you. You were given information as far as own concern at the time that you got that approval that was incomplete. The letter did not mention the amendment that was part of our docs that dealt with the 25% cap. As part of your due diligence, it was your responsibility as a prospective purchaser to be aware of the condo documents. So if-- So that was your responsibility, to be aware of our condo docs.
No.
And the letter specifically-- Sorry, I don't have the letter in front of me, but the letter giving you-- The letter giving you the right to rent, I believe it had the expression-- "Please be advised that your unit was purchased under the moratorium of May 20, 2010, and as such, you are able to rent the unit right away." To me, that is the critical term in this letter, "right away." Had you made an application to rent at that time, you probably-- Again, I was not a member of the board, and I was not a part of the sales and lease committee. My assumption would be that you probably would have been approved because there was a moratorium place. The simple fact is, for whatever reasons, you waited until February of this year to make an application to rent. At that time, the association is now governed by that particular amendment. That is now part of our documents. The moratorium is no longer in effect. And based on that aspect of our documents, we cannot allow a rental. And from a purchase standpoint, I know you made quite an investment. And this is not part of your expectations, but from my point of view, the association must live by our documents. That's our rules and regulations. So at the time you made your application for rental, we had reached the 25% cap. Now, if that-- If, for example, the challenge to that amendment is successful or the documents are changed such that it invalidates that aspect of our document, there's a new rule that will allow you to rent, or well and good, and you can do so. I strongly suggest you get it back into an individual name from an LLC as soon as possible. But as of right now, we are governed by that particular amendment, and the association has no choice, my point of view, but to function as the document's hosting.
Thank you, Mr. Shabat. Any discussion--
I would like to comment--
Yes, go ahead.
I mean, obviously, when we bought it, we could have rented right away to anybody. But we were looking for the right person to rent the unit. And that's the reason we didn't rent it right away. So I mean, I don't think the fact that, you know, it was right away and we didn't do it right away should be holding against me. The fact of the matter is that you get $28,000 prepaid special assessment, and that's the reason I got the letter, not anything else. So I mean, you know, like, I came here. I took one hour of my time to be here and explain to you. And I don't think you're even considering doing anything about it. I would like to rent the apartment because I did buy it that under the assumption I can rent it right away, later. Nobody mentioned anything about the 25% cap. Now, can you even prove to me that back then, when you gave me the letter, we were not over the cap? What was the point that you reached the cap? Because we asked that question to the president. There was no-- We never got any good answer. And we have an attorney. We're going to pursue this matter if you're not going to help us. And we'd like you to help us, and we're going to change it to form the corporation to my name or to individual name. No problem, as soon as possible. And we did buy it under the corporation, so it's okay. I mean, we didn't have any issue with the-- Whenever we purchased, there was not any issue. We just got it-- Huh?
And we wanted the $28,000 prepaid. Maureen was super nice to us, explained to us that it shouldn't be a problem. She didn't limit us for time. As a matter of fact, you guys accepted the application for the renter on March 15. The letter of the litigacy was two weeks later. They should have never taken the application from the tenant who wanted to rent it if you know that you cannot approve it. And Maureen verified, she's right here present to let you know, she told you specifically, "You are allowed to rent it." We purchased it, and we had very good terms with Maureen. She's trying to help us. And we did also some application because of the water leak. She's afraid of, there is water leak. We make sure that everything is not going to be okay, not going to be a problem. We did everything according to what the rules and regulations. There were a couple of applications. They came by unfortunate with Section 8. You guys did not approve it, which we respected. Not a shooting date, not a problem. We didn't even argue the matter. She said Section 8, I'm not allowed to. I respected very much. Not a problem, no arguments. That's the reason. Unfortunately, that's the people who wanted to rent it. But you guys said-- We didn't even look, we didn't even ask for no evidence of no Section 8 allowed. We didn't even argue the matter, and we have Maureen here to agree to it as well. She said, "Not a problem, we'll get it." We had a tenant who wanted to rent the unit for $1,650. Quality people, $1,650. They didn't send the application. They took the money from the person. They didn't took the application money. The lady waited over there till the last minute, and two weeks later, we get a letter that we cannot approve. I think that you really should accept it. We're not here to argue. We don't want to get no attorneys involved. We're not looking to make problems. We're really looking to have good quality people and evidence and asset. And I'm sure that you could just work it out. You shouldn't go into no arguments. And if I wouldn't have that letter, we wouldn't spend it. And she-- The lady is right here, and she says, "Thank God that we got the $28,000." Not too many people pay all the assessment for $28,000 in one shot.
Because you're asking each and every person here that--
The thing that doesn't appear to be fair to these guys is the fact there's so many units here that have the right to rent even in the 25% situation. Now, a way to look at it from their benefit is the fact that they were given that right with that letter. And as I say, there are lots of units that have that right regardless of the 25%. And if we consider them with that letter, one of those, then we could rent it. And a good thing in their favor is the fact that even though it was a foreclosure, I understand, we could have lost a lot, if not all, of the assessment that they were good enough to put forward. They bought the price and placed it at a good price, and they felt they liked it enough that they were willing to spend all that extra money. And that went into our pockets. So to me, being-- You know, my position as an investor, I would say if they were to put it in an individual's name, I think we could consider them as having been given the right to rent with that letter. And it's a shame-- It doesn't seem fair, I should say, not to pull it away from them because of something that wasn't in effect when they bought the property.
I just want to make one thing clear. The gentleman said about our taking the application fee from the potential tenant, all of those fees were returned. We did not negotiate those checks.
All right. That's a detail, that's a detail.
That's a detail. I guess we need a vote from the board whether to accept or reject the appeal. I'll--
Can we amend that a little bit? Reject or accept the appeal based on the fact before we allow a rental, the property has to be in an individual's name?
That--
Has to be. Six months and haven't done it. It's not a problem, but it's--
The vote on the motion-- The vote on this has nothing to do-- One thing has nothing to do with the other. He's required to change it into the individual name. It has nothing to do with our decision on the rental.
Okay, we're going to call-- Frances is going to call the-- Yeah, the motion. Can I have a motion, please? A motion to either accept or deny?
You mean, Frances, do you say that we can't make a motion with a stipulation? I've heard motions before with stipulations. Why now we can't?
Make a motion with stipulation? I don't understand that. Why can't we make a motion that we would allow a rental if the property gets put in-- The property must be put in an individual's name before they can rent it?
The-- The problem that the board is discussing now is allowing or disallowing the rental in view of the 25% cap. This has nothing-- I mean, we either deny it because of the 25% cap.
Yeah, but if we are considering that letter as giving them the right--
Look, there's no question in fact that letter was written in September, and it was correct at that time. And they bought the property in July of 2011, and it was February 15 before they made any application for rental. And by that time, it was just unfortunate.
I don't see what the timeframe has to do with it. I don't see what the timeframe has to do with it at all. They had to remodel the property. They had work to do. They had to find a tenant. They already went through a Section 8 tenant that was denied, and they accepted--
They don't do Section 8.
I understand that, but it went through the committee--
No, it didn't.
Terry, Terry. Hold on, please, please. Terry, the question is not the letter. We are not-- They have not been denied because they cannot rent. We're not denying their rental right. We're denying their right to rent now because we reached our 25% cap. It is as simple as that. It's black and white.
But I thought if there is a right to rent-- If there's a-- If I wanted to rent my apartment that I bought in 2000, even with the 25% cap, I'd be entitled to rent it, right? Now, the question that I'm putting out there is, can that letter-- Can that letter be used in the same manner that my ownership?
No.
The attorney said no.
Okay, I'd like to go-- You did ask the attorney then.
Right.
Yeah, I believe-- I believe the-- What the board is being asked to vote on is an appeal from the February, whatever it is, letter which denied the rental application because of the 25% cap. That's what the board is being voted on, is voting on. We are not voting on whatever letter back from last year. We are simply voting on the appeal of the February 2012 letter denying the rental application due to the 25%.
We will now call-- Yeah, okay. Can I have a motion, please? Morgan, Morgan?
I motion-- I make the motion to deny the appeal of--
G-2P.
Of G-2P.
Do I have a second there? Do I have a second there?
I'll second the motion.
Frances will second the motion, okay? Any objection? Any objections?
Yeah, I don't--
Then we'll call the roll, please.
Marvin Tao?
Yes.
Yes for what? Excuse me.
The motion is to deny the appeal.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, deny the appeal.
Marvin Tao, who did you ask? Francis Menzur, yes. Mark Richmond?
Yep.
Colleen Goslin?
Yes.
Jerome Merrill?
No.
Thank you. Jerome--
Terry? Yes, yes. Please be quiet, sir. Thank you.
Charles Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
The motion goes--
Marriage counsel, your appeal has been denied.
As a matter of fact, I just want you to know as well that it would be-- Right, it's taking care of it currently right now.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments.
I'm sticking. We just want you to know, the minute that we issued the letter, the standard just applies to me because he's right here. He's listening to all my decisions. This unit should have been reserved that you know that you gave a letter to this unit. It was before the 25%. Let's assume that you read aloud the 25%. When I received the letter, we didn't reach the 25%. It was-- Maureen was well aware that the unit has--
Sir, you made your appeal. We understand your situation. Thank you, sir. We're going to move on. Sir, please, thank you very much. Understood, thank you. Moving on, we'll move to the Water Conservation Committee report. Thank you. Yes, sir, you have a question. Please stand up.
For the last 20 years, the lousy board we've had has forced individuals to pay for legal advice, which has gone down to-- I don't know how many thousands of dollars were spent legally for various things like this and various other things. If this goes to court now, we're going to go ahead and be forced to pay some money. Why can't you people get together and provide a waiver? Your government provides a waiver, the state department provides a waiver, the aviation parts a waiver. Why can't you apply a waiver in a situation like this?
We have-- There's been some discussion of that issue among the board members. And I've had discussions about this issue with the unit owners. Part of our-- Part of the decision-making process, no matter how the board acts on this-- This is a very controversial issue. No matter how the board acts, there's going to be individuals there's going to be individuals who do not think it's the right thing to do. So, I, what I believe, so what, the, the, the position we're taking is what is defensible? So, no, assuming that we're going to be sued no matter what we do, what is a defensible stamp? And our attorney has essentially said to us, follow the rule, follow your documents as we, you can defend your, if you follow your documents, if you follow your own rules, you can defend that. If you break your own rules, you're in muddy waters. So we are choosing to follow our own rules.
I appreciate that part of it. Why can't you investigate the situation for waivers? Waivers are very well-known in the government. This is a government.
We, I don't believe waivers applies to this situation. We are in the 25% amendment committee, of which on the chair is in process of reviewing that amendment and very specifically, there's a challenge to the validity of that amendment. And one way or another, the board is going to be addressing the whole rental cap issue one way or another as time goes on. So we will be addressing this issue, but as of right now, the board is choosing to follow our attorney's advice and, which is to follow our own rules as they exist at the moment.
Marvin, you said no matter what we decide, there's going to be a suit. Who's going to sue us if we decided to let them rid? Who would sue us?
He's on life.
Yeah, well, why wouldn't he? Because we violated our documents. And he'll go, he'll go to the other side. Of course he wouldn't, he'd probably win and collect money.
How many documents were waived in the last 20 years?
Or a bunch of homeowners get together that have purchased units over the last 10 years with the expert, or since this 25% cap went into place. In fact, we bought our unit with the idea that there was a 25% cap, so I wouldn't be living in a community with 80, 90% rentals. I want to live in a community with predominantly, that's predominantly owner-occupied or, you know, snowbirds, and that would be 75% of the population. So I would think that if we allowed these exceptions, any exception would be accepted, okay? And therefore, all the people that bought under the expectation that there would be a 25% cap would get together and have a class action suit that we purchased and we'd sue for damages. That would be a big suit. And I think almost any attorney would take that and settle and, and, and take it on contingency because it's a case he would win. And it's big money. They don't like little cases, they like big cases. Thank you, Terry. We have one more question, then we'll have to move on. Go ahead.
It's not so much a question, but I just feel nobody likes lawyers' fees, nobody likes us owners to threaten lawyers. But on the other hand, if we're gonna jump every, every time somebody threatens to get a lawyer, might as well disregard every regulation. Because with threatening with a lawyer, you can have elephants in this, you know, you just have to threaten, well, you know, about my elephant on your premises, I'm gonna sue you.
Have an elephant as a service animal? Thank you. Just to move on, I'm gonna pass the microphone over to the guy that's been dominating the microphone tonight. No, coming up. Water Conservation Committee report.
By the way, Michael Schenkel is the chair of the Water Conservation Committee, but he is in the hospital right now, so I'm, I'm gonna make the report on his behalf. Just to fill you in for those who don't know, right now, water makes up about 20% of our, of the budget of the association. And we are very confident that there is a significant amount of loss and leakage that is causing this excessive amount. The rate, the rise in our costs over the last few years has been much more than any rise in population and much more than rise in water rates. So it can only be attributed to leakage or other kinds of loss. So at this point, we, we've had an event to encourage people to buy more efficient toilets because that's a significant amount of residential use. But now we're going to pursue avenues that we hope will create the, the best, will be the most efficient in, in reducing our water consumption. And the first one we're going to go to is residential use. So the initial, two things, or two avenues were used. First is to inspect eventually, hopefully, every single unit in the village and find any obvious leaks and find other, other potential problems. There are many water heaters in the village that are very old and some of them have already burst, causing massive problems, expensive problems for that unit owner, unit owners below and so forth. So we are beginning a concerted effort to inspect every unit for leaks and potential leaks. We're going to be starting with the easiest ones, we're gonna be starting with the unoccupied units. Then building by building, we're going to be going to, we're gonna be noticing this, this inspection program, asking for people just to volunteer to let us in and inspect their units. Those will be the first. Then units for which we have keys will, will be second. And then we'll deal with the rest of them on an individual basis. Each building will get noticed, we're gonna be going on a building by building basis. Each building will be noticed when we're gonna start the inspections. And the order of the buildings, we're going to be looking at the, the amount of the water bill per building and the ones that we're spending the most money on where there's the most potential amount of leaking, we're gonna do those buildings first. Now, for a longer-term solution to the problem, the association is actively looking into sub-meter, which means give each unit its own water meter and each unit owner the, the opportunity to pay for their own water. And there will be a, a reduction in the overall, there should be a reduction in maintenance if everybody gets to pay their own. So that's kind of a medium and long-term thing that we are looking at and we're just in the very, very beginning of that process. And that's Water Conservation. Any questions from board members? Any questions from unit owners?
Yeah, Marvin, on your sub-meter, how are you going to address any units that are put together in terms of the...
I have absolutely no specific information of how the project works. I only know that, that the association is now looking for the first time, considering the idea, and, and we're looking for ways for that to work and we're looking to get proposals to see if it's possible, how it's going to work from the very beginning. But as, as Jerry has very often mentioned, the only way to get people to, one of the best ways to get people responsible for their water usage is to have them pay for their own water usage. So if, if there is a feasible way to have each unit sub-metered and have each unit owner pay for their water, that could very well go a long way to reduce the waste, to reduce the waste.
Marvin, in the minutes from the last meeting, February 20th meeting, it was, it was, it was mentioned that we were gonna hire a water leakage expert. Has anything been done to accomplish what we set, what set out at the last meeting to do?
Okay, three companies were contacted, All For One, Davy Plumbing, and our own Mike. Both Davy and All For One, they agreed, we made available copies of our water bills, three years' worth of water bills for all the buildings. And they said verbally that they would get those, review them, and give us a proposal to look at our water situation and, and give us a proposal. Neither of them have responded. And despite repeated calls, they have simply... The only one is Mike, Mike sent over a technician who walked around and gave a very, very brief proposal, but the bottom line is, which basically is agreeing with your premise that you've made many times, number one, find the obvious leaks, get into every unit, solve that problem, and then moving forward, have everybody, find, if, if there's a way to have everybody responsible for their own water, that will also go a long way to, that will, it would instantaneously lower the association's responsibility for water and transfer a major part of it to the unit owners.
Joe, I have an answer to your last question. Even if it's a continuous pipe that runs from one unit to the other, what they do is they cut the line and they insert a spinner going into the first pipe, and then they'll cut it on the other end going into the second unit. So it's only, you're only using the water that's entering into the other unit. You're not paying double. That's how they, they actually cut the pipe and put a spinner in there if it's, if it's one line going to two units.
So which way is the flow going? Who's paying for the flow? Spinners only flow in one direction?
Right, it's the water, in the direction of the water, if it goes past the line...
So if I'm feeding the next unit, I'll still pay for the...
Gentlemen, this is a very, very premature discussion. We have no information, that's it. Very, very...
That's what I was told.
I got one other question or suggestion. If you're going through all this trouble, again, I think it's a great idea, okay? If you're going through all this other trouble, and we do at that time, we need to put individual unit shut-offs. Of course, again, tomorrow, the Heidelberg, we're just gonna shut off for half a day. And it is an inconvenience.
Joe, thank you very much, but this is, again, so, so premature, we have no information at all, so we can't even have an intelligent discussion, honest, because you're talking preemptively. We haven't even looked at it, Joe. Thank you.
You could look at, yes, I'd look at it.
Okay. Like to move on now to other committee, are there, Steve, do you have a report on Steve, do you have a report?
A number of people have come forward with complaints and concerns. They all chose to remain anonymous. Those go right in the garbage. Anyone could look at our in-house television channel and you will see what the protocol is for this committee. You have to provide us with contact information. And if you look at the box outside the clubhouse door, it basically says the same thing. We had one legitimate unit owner come forward, but she didn't understand that first she needs to go through the regular channels, meaning the management team, go through them, and then if they don't get any, any satisfaction from them, then they come forward and, and address it, the issues to the committee. Because we've had so little work coming our way, I have to assume that our management team is doing a good job in terms of follow-up and contacting people and getting back to them when they do have a complaint. Thank you.
What is the committee and what do they, what do they get back to? I, I didn't hear the committee.
The, the, this is the Concerns and Complaints Oversight Committee. If someone goes to the office with a concern or a complaint of any kind and they feel either that their complaint or concern has not been addressed in a timely manner, or if they feel that the, the management team did not get back to them, they can come to us and we will look into it and we will get back to them.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Goodhart, you have, you have a committee report? Not yet? Okay, thank you. All right. I will pass, I'm gonna pass the mic over to Marvin again to discuss the dog situation in the village.
Excuse me, Dick did mention something about an event that's coming up that I just found out tonight, and if he shared it, then we could put it on our calendar, didn't you, Dick?
It will be put on the calendar in another week or so.
Oh, you're not, in other words, it's not definite? Is that what you're saying?
It is definite.
It is definite?
Yes.
But you don't want to share it with us?
Not yet.
Okay.
Okay, we'll be talking about dogs. As Elwood alluded to, there have been many, many complaints about, number one, the quantity of unregistered dogs on the property and the fact that the dogs are being walked on the property, plus excessively noisy dogs. And it's, it's, it is a, a major nuisance. There, there was a period of time when dog owners were given the opportunity to legalize their, their ownership on the property. And an application was given to these people and six unit owners submitted applications for a total of nine dogs. So we have a total of nine registered dogs on the property.
Were there any owners?
Yes, there are three owners that have two registrations each for a total of nine. Now, just, so, and, and the, the reports that I've received, that Elwood received seem to indicate that there are many, many more than just those dying. So we are going to be instituting a, a program, developing a system to locate these unregistered dogs and issue violation, violation notices to the units involved. Now, another aspect of the problem here is that all of these applications, right at the bottom of the application that the unit owner signed, it restated the rule about dogs which included the statement that dogs are not allowed to be walked on association property. It's flat out, it's absolute, there's no if, and, or, buts about it. But I'm sure some of you, I know I've seen it on three occasions where a resident is walking their dog on the property. So we're going to also start pushing, basically to try a system to identify these residents and issue violations to them. I know on a couple of occasions, they had been asked not to do that anymore and they may have given verbal assurances, oh, I didn't understand, I won't do it anymore, but they continue doing it. Once they get, once it starts costing them money, they may have, they may think twice about doing this. So we're going to move ahead with the system and, and hopefully that'll reduce the noise, reduce the nuisance value.
Another question?
Yes.
Did I hear properly, you said two people have, how many dogs?
There are three unit owners who have put in applications for two dogs.
I thought you said there were more, more than two?
There's a total of six unit owners for a total of nine dogs.
All right. If I, if I decide to get a dog and I come in with permission from whoever, okay?
No.
No, 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 it's legal permission from a psychiatrist or whatever, a doctor? You mean I can't bring the dog in now?
That's correct.
Why?
Because, okay, the only dogs that are allowed are, are government certified, I don't, I don't, I do not know if it's, a service dog. I don't know if a service dog certificate is issued by county or state, but it has to be a government-issued service dog certificate.
I understand that, but somebody comes in with a government-issued, for, for a proper, okay?
Yes.
You ever have more than one dog? Are there, is there any, I've seen people with two dogs. How about me? I'll get that certificate and bring in four dogs. Come on! More than one dog?
As far as I know, I've never seen that issue come up.
I've seen people walk two dogs out of here.
I, I have a question.
Why would anybody need two dogs? Why should they be allowed more than one dog?
The other dog, the other dog is the one I got.
I'm gonna get permission.
I have a question. Marvin? This, this might, this might be a little interesting to, to some of the owners. One of the owners that formerly had walked their dog around the property actually came up to me and asked, and I, I didn't really have an answer. They said they no longer walk their dog on the property, you know, they wanted to comply. They are now carrying their dog around the property. That's not, that's acceptable, if they carry their dog.
I, my own personal opinion, if they carry their dog from their car to their unit...
No, they, they're carrying their dog around the, they're not walking their dog, they're carrying their dog. Would that be permissible?
That's a good question. That's a very good question.
Excuse me, excuse me, order, please, order. The reason for the non-walking of your animal dog on the property is to stop them from doing their number ones and their number twos on the property. Now, if you carry a dog with you, you know, the likelihood of your dog doing wee-wee and poo-poo in your arms is very small. So let's get, but it is a serious problem and it's not something that we should joke about. Marvin has a very good plan and let him explain it and we're gonna do our very best to adhere to the rules.
to adhere to the rules.
Yes?
Jeffrey and I walked around the property several times, and in the last couple of months since we've been here, there has been no animal feces that we've seen, uh, dog feces, lots of duck feces, which is quite annoying. But more importantly, this Sunday, somebody wheeled their dog to the pool.
Yeah.
And had their dog out of the stroller, yeah, on the, uh, recliner with them, went to the hot tub, locked the dog in the stroller by the hot tub. The dog did not go in the water, but the dog was there. Service dog. This person has been at the pool before with no need of the service dog. Now, the dog really didn't disrupt anything, the dog stayed like where it was supposed to, but I cannot imagine that either in the swimming pool, in the clubhouse, in the weight room, in the exercise room, that we should be having dogs.
Thank you, Harry. Um, in fact, we discussed that, uh, earlier today, and I went and seen Maureen and asked her the question, and, uh, she did have some sort of an answer for me. According to the APA, uh, we cannot deny access, uh, to any common element, uh, with the service dog, but she did say something. Uh, let me check with the Florida Housing Authority and see what their rules and regulations is, and I don't believe that was done today, is that correct, Maureen? Right, so, give us an opportunity to phone the Florida Housing Authority and see what their standards and their regulations are regarding service animals, okay? Thank you. Uh, Marvin, are you, uh?
That's it?
That's it, okay.
Joe, just a comment, I'll address it to Elwood. I tried to walk a dog properly the other day.
Quiet, please, quiet, please.
I tried to gate, and the dog couldn't go because of all the toe touch, fuck that one.
Okay, um, good, any other, uh, comments on, uh, on dogs?
I have, I have a point, like yesterday in front of Sorek, it smelled dog food.
Well, I would suggest you, you put a complaint in. Yes, uh, George?
You're talking about the dogs and dog, I want to tell you right now...
You're talking about dogs or ducks?
When, I've been here 27 years in this community. This place, we not accepted any animals, this class, in this moment, we have never one walking in the, in our house. My problem is, I don't care who has dogs, animals, any, I don't care. The problem is, I've been working the magazines and cleaning all the mess the dogs they live in the forward. The cart is there, they peeing in there, I doing this job, I know it, they do it, I do this job every day. You know, I'm telling you, the human, they're doing this, the dogs, they don't, okay? I'm smiling about, everybody got, everybody, can you tell me you smiling, you all way in the car, in the, you're part of me, you building, you smiling up, eat dogs?
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you, George.
I'm not, I'm not agree with these things, you have to do something, it's not right.
We are going to, uh, we're gonna try to stay as strict as we possibly can, but you know, once in, it's very difficult to get out, so we need to really, really, there are, I know of owners that follow our rules and regulations. They actually do take or carry their dog or drive their dog off the property and walk their animals outside. They don't bark, they don't disturb. Unfortunately, there, there are others that don't really care. And they, and this is the ones that we're really going to, we're, we're not gonna hassle, uh, the people to follow the rules, uh, we're going to go after the violators, that's the bottom line. So, those of you that have, uh, dogs, that, uh, you follow the rules, don't worry, this is, the, you are not the people we're after, we're after the violators. Right, but however, if you do have an animal, a dog, please, have the decency of coming into the office so at least we can register them. Hold on. No, 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 I'm wrong, I'm wrong. Oh.
There was a limited period of time during which dogs already here, uh, the owners of which were given a chance to register them.
Yes.
That, that ended, I believe it was June of 2011 or somewhere around there.
It was March.
March, so, there is no more, uh, registration of, of dogs. From that point on, until now, no more dogs allowed, period.
Sorry.
Except service animals.
Except service animals, okay.
Yeah, but the idea of that was that, uh, we, we accepted the fact that the dogs were here, and then, other than the service dogs, okay, by virtue of attrition, as the dogs die out, uh, there'll be no dogs here except for service dogs eventually.
Thank you, uh, I'd like to move on, it's almost nine o'clock. Uh, I'd like to pass the mic over now to, to Jerry Miro, uh, and to discuss, uh, the installation of speed bumps. Uh, I think that this is something very dear and important to Jerry, and we'd like to give him the opportunity to express, uh, those feelings. Jerry?
Okay, I've noticed that the, uh, population here has changed quite a bit, and we have a lot more youngsters, uh, here, playing in the street, we don't have an official place for them to play. Uh, along with that, I also notice in my walking, uh, a lot of drivers. Uh, and the drivers, not that they're speeding, and they do have speeders, but it's not even just the speeders, it's, I see frequently the drivers consulting their phones and their computers, and they're not looking, they're just simply not looking, they're driving, and the car is moving, and they're doing whatever they're doing, but their attention is not on the road. So, to me, uh, the combination of a lot more youngsters than I remember that we had, uh, and the fact that so many people are really not paying attention when they're driving, they do it on the main road, too, but they do it particularly before they get on the main road, and I see it frequently. So, I think an easy way of, of at least slowing the traffic down, uh, is, uh, speed bumps, but I'm interested in the speed bumps in the, in the stretches of, uh, we had a quote for 20 speed bumps. I, I don't think we need half of 20 speed bumps, we need the stretches of road where people, uh, get an opportunity to pick up speed. So, I think that, that we can cut that way back from 20, and just go like from the clubhouse to the Heidelberg, and the Heidelberg back to the Nottingham. Uh, there's certain areas that we just want people to wake up when they're not paying attention. And, uh, so, again, it's mostly because of the kids, and they, so many kids, but it's also because of the poor drivers, or the otherwise occupied drivers. Thank you.